Then we will begin. We will call to order the Town of Lake Lour Town Council Regular Meeting, Tuesday, November the ninth, 2021. Having had an opportunity to review the agenda and looking at now, are there any edits or changes to be made?
Madam Mayor, I have two changes or additions actually to the agenda. Under New Business Item H, I'd like to add Golf Course Transition as a topic.
Thanks.
And under Article 11, Item B, in addition to the closed session item that's already there, another closed session item in accordance with GS 143 318, Tech 11, Alpha 6, for the purpose of discussing personnel matters.
All right, are there any other additions or edits to be made? Then do I hear a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Commissioner Bryan, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as amended by Commissioner Diorio.
Second?
Diorio, second.
All in favor, if you please state your name since we're remote.
Bryant, aye.
Diorio, aye.
You'll be aye.
Or aye.
Then the agenda is adopted as amended. Thank you all for joining us tonight. Just to let you know, this will be our last Town Council meeting by Zoom for the foreseeable future. Our December Town Council meeting will be in person, as will all the advisory boards in the month of December. We're very fortunate to have, for the most part, gotten through these past couple of months unscathed by COVID. A few people were affected, but I think due to our prudence, we've been able to make sure that everybody was kept as safe as possible. I would like to say just a couple of words, and that is, first of all, I know everybody has noticed, of course, that the lake is down. It is just down seven feet, not down 12, as we predicted. It will go down to that ultimately, but for the time being, we're going to be holding it at seven. So we still have beautiful water to look at. It brings to mind, we have so many things on our agenda for this year, for this season to be done while the lake is down. We certainly have embarked on a remarkable path to address the challenges, infrastructure challenges that the Town of Lake Lour has. And we have plans in place. Things, as always, as always, things in life have to be, have to be adaptable. They have to be a little bit able to be moved around and be juggled because everything is dependent on other things. But we have many wonderful things that are going to be done this year while the lake is down in preparing us and in completing the beginnings of our pathway. And, you know, as we speak about this, this truly is the beginning of a long path for all of us to achieve the resolutions to all these challenges. And I am reminded that, you know, thank you all. First of all, thank everyone who voted. It is certainly a privilege and a responsibility for all of us to vote in the elections. And so that is a beginning and an ending, if you will. And so we will have two new commissioners who will join the council on December the 14th. And then we will have two commissioners who, Mr. John Kilby and Mr. John Moore, will be leaving on December the 14th. So it is, it is a beginning and it is the ending. And this, they will be here for, for the next December 14th meeting, but this will be Mr. Shannon Baldwin's, our town manager's last meeting as town manager, as he is retiring on December the first. So, you know, as we all know, it is the beginning and it is the ending, but those things that are begun survive people's leaving, and their contributions are always remembered and valued even after they are gone. So we thank certainly Mr. Shannon Baldwin for the years of service that he has given to the Town of Lake Lour and for being at the beginning of this process, and also for Mr. John Kilby and Mr. John Moore. So we thank, say thank you to all of you. There is always, there is always transition, and we move forward and we keep in mind that everybody has made a contribution, but we thank you all for that. We will now move on to the Town Manager's Communication.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just would like to say that after 17 years with the town, I can say that this is definitely my last meeting with the Town of Lake Lour. Accomplishments have been many. That's what the record shows. The record speaks for itself. I've been surrounded by talented people since I've been here, and it's been a joy working with the folks here in Lake Lour, especially our department directors. We've had wonderful leaders with these respective departments. I would have to say that the general public really doesn't understand what we've been able to accomplish over the last three years. It will show with time, especially if the next board stays the course like the current one has. This current board has had to address extremely difficult scenarios. They've stayed the course. They've unwavered, or they didn't waver. It's been, it's been, it's been a great board. It's been a joy, and I certainly wish the town well. And, you know, my hope is that we'll continue to have the character and the wisdom to say good things about one another in the future. So there's my last and final statement about my work with the Town of Lake Lour. So, thank you.
Thank you so much. We will then move on to the next session, which is our public hearing. Just to remind everyone, since this is a remote meeting, the public, we are required, the public body, to allow for written comments on the subject of the public hearing to be submitted between publication of any required notice in 24 hours after the public hearing for public hearings during a remote meeting. Do I hear a motion then for us to go into our public hearing?
That we move into the public hearing?
Is there a second?
Bryant will second.
All in favor?
Bryant, aye.
Diorio, aye.
You'll be aye.
Or aye.
Thank you. The first item for a public hearing, and just to remind anyone that, that anyone from the public who wishes to speak certainly may add their comments. We limit that to, hopefully, three minutes, as we, we want everyone to have an opportunity to speak, but we do need to be conscious of the time. The first item is Ordinance Number 21-11-09, an ordinance emitting Chapter 92 zoning regulations of the Town of Lake Lour Code of Ordinances concerning revisions to 92.042D, Section 47, to address current engineering standards for constructing cell towers, then in case of structural failure, will fall within a confined area. Shannon, I'll default to you on that.
That will be Mr. Williams.
And that would be me.
That would be you. Thank you, Mike.
We've been looking at the the cell tower regulations and realized that the current code requires 110% of the tower height for, for a new communication tower. There's been a lot of, lot of changes during the time since the ordinance was written, and we're, we're actually been talking to some carriers for putting the tower in and realized that there are engineered design fall zones that will limit the, the fall zone for, for a new tower. So we have proposed that we would change the setbacks, which are primarily oriented towards protecting adjacent properties, to go from 110% of the tower height to 110% of the, the designed fall zone. The towers are built to collapse, in the case of emergency, collapse at a 75 foot or 50 foot or some design amount, and so it can fall no further than that distance. So we're, we're proposing 110% of the engineered fall zone for a tower that would have a fall engineered fall zone. And that's the basic proposal. Are there any questions?
I'm sorry, I was muted. Are there any questions for Mr. Williams, if I can one? Is there anyone in the public which wishes to make, who wishes to make a comment?
Mike, this was approved or recommended by the zoning planning board unanimously, correct?
That is correct. I appreciate you being there when they reviewed that. And feel like, you know, cell coverage is a big issue in our community, and we don't exactly have carriers flocking in trying to build. It's hard to, it's hard to meet our standards. And so part of the idea is that this is going to make it more feasible for somebody to come in and be able to build a tower. A more reasonable fall, more reasonable setback when it's, when it's appropriate. And it would be appropriate when there is a designed, an engineered, designed fall zone that would limit that, that the, the area of collapse.
Okay.
So yes, it was recommended by the zoning planning board.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing that up, Mr. Kilby. Is there any other comments or questions for Mr. Williams on this issue? And if there's no one from the public who wishes to speak, then we will move to the next issue. Ordinance Number 21-11-09A, an ordinance emitting Chapter 92 zoning regulations of the Town of Lake Lour Board of Ordinances concerning revisions to 92.062A to waive a zoning review fee structure for home occupation permit applications due to the requirement to have the Board of Adjustment approve such applications as a special use, rather than administrative approval. And I would venture to say that, Mike, you'll be the person speaking to that as well.
I will try to do that again. And it's kind of appropriate that we're having a Zoom meeting tonight because, you know, the COVID has affected a lot of things. One of them is, there's so many more people who are working from home, and we've had a lot of applications of people trying to, applying for permits to do a home occupation, which is what the, the town requires. But our town ordinance requires that you go to a special use permit. It's just instead of administrative decision that I can make on it, the Board of Adjustments has to determine that that home occupation is appropriate. That's fine, but there's a $480 permit, special use permit fee that somebody has to take. And then, once that is approved or denied, if it is approved, they have to get a zoning permit, which will be another $250. And so we feel like, the staff has felt like that's just an inordinate amount of money for something that's as routine as a home occupation. And so we took it to the Planning and Zoning Board, the Planning Board, Planning and Zoning Board also felt that it was, they were surprised, actually, that there was going to be that much cost for a home occupation. And so the recommendation was made to continue to do the, the board review for the special use permit, which would require the $480 permit, but to waive the permit fee for the zoning permit. The, the issue is that the, it's already been approved, it's been reviewed and approved by the board. There's no, there's nothing that the zoning official can really add to it. So we didn't want to have to charge that extra fee. So that's the meat of the, the ordinance. Or suggested ordinance.
Let me get out. Are there any questions for Mr. Williams?
Mayor Pritchett?
Yes.
I apologize, I could not unmute myself.
That's perfectly all.
In time to ask Mike a question about the first ordinance about the cell tower. If you don't mind, can we go back to that for just one moment?
Of course.
My name is Moby. I'm in Lake Lour. I'm on the Board of Park and Recreation, Mike. Plan for the Boys Camp property. Initial plan for a campsite. So when we're talking about a fall zone, and I know that the fingerprint of the proposed cell tower was fairly minimal, but does that mean, because there has to be a fall zone, that we can't proceed with plans to develop that property in another way?
The plan is to continue with the park, and the master plan, it came from Parks and Recreation, designs the, takes into account the tower sort of in the center. And actually, when it was reworked by the, the architects, they came up with more space for campsites and for picnic surrounding the tower, because they also were able to move out the spoils pile for the dredge. So it's still the same project. It just has the tower will be inside, will be in the park.
Okay.
What you were asking?
Yeah, pretty much. I just didn't want that fall zone to negate future plans to develop that property for reference.
Oh, no, no. No, we're excited about the park, and it seems to be a good fit. I mean, there's been, I'll admit, there's been a couple jokes about what part of primitive camping do you not understand when you're talking about a cell tower in the middle of it? But those folks will have great access to, to a cell signal and, and even streaming, I guess, in there. So, no, it's going to, it's going to continue just as it was planned.
One thing to consider, Mike, they'll, they'll be able to order pizza a whole lot better.
It's a whole lot, be a whole lot easier.
All right. Well, thank you for answering that question. I'm sorry to make y'all back up on that.
No, that's perfectly right. We are certainly conscious in the fact that being on Zoom makes it a little bit more difficult, but we certainly do, just to add, we certainly appreciate everything Olivia is doing to make sure that we're able to do this on Zoom. Are there, is there any other comment from the public that anyone wants to make about actual either of those ordinances, but in particular, the, to waiving the zoning fee? Then we'll move on to item number C, ordinance Number 21-11-09B, an ordinance adopting the Town of Lake Lour's Boys Camp Road, Mark, Park Master Plan, and to incorporate a communication tower into the park plan for parcel number 1655367. And I believe, once again, Mike, this is yours.
It is, and actually, just a follow-up to the last remarks, because it's just, it's, it's really just approving the master plan that includes the tower and the park around it. I think I can share my screen. And I'm not sure if I know how to turn that around, rotate. Can you see that? This is the, this is what's
We're not, we're not seeing it.
We're not seeing it.
Let's see. Is that working?
There you go.
Yes, yes.
All right, this is the proposed master plan, and it's going to, you can see the cell tower here in the center. They'll have a fenced in area around it, because you've got the utility, utilities in there. It's a 50 by 70 foot area. They're going to plant Leland cypresses around it if they, if this happens. And then you've got the campsites, you've got the park, you've got, it's actually got more space for the park and the camping than was, than was planned originally, because the dredge area, the, the spoils area has been moved from here back over into the, into the, the current area, and the cell tower will be, will be in there. So yes, the tower and the park will coexist, and we're excited about that. So we're asking that the, the proposed master plan be approved as the master plan for that parcel of Boys Camp Road. As was recommended by the Planning and Zoning Board at their last meeting.
Okay, thank you so much, Mike, and we appreciate the zoning and planning board taking that under consideration, too. Are there any questions, any other questions for Mr. Williams, or if there anyone from the public who wishes to speak? Well, Mike, thank you very much for addressing all these, all these three things, and we certainly appreciate all, all the work that you've, all your contributions to making this. I know we are all particularly in, at one, certainly appreciative of the fact that we will have connectivity, finally, in all parts of Lake Lour. Because this is a remote meeting, we do have to allow for comments to, to be submitted, written comments, for 24 hours after the public meeting.
Mayor, if I could just say, I'm sorry, this is William. I can interject one thing. The statute on that changed recently, and it's now from the date of publication of the notice through the 24 hours prior to the start of the public hearing.
Well, perfect. Well, that works well. Thank you so much, William. Good change.
Yeah, before there was questions of, if you could vote, or if you could vote contingently, or
Right.
You had to wait. So that's one of the things that's cleared up by the general assembly, so.
All right. Well, in that case, I think we may, in that case, we certainly can take a vote at this point, if I understand that correctly. And we will then, let's address the item A, Ordinance Number
Mayor, sorry, I'm sorry, but one other thing, I think it's on the agenda. I don't have the written agenda in front of me, is it not?
It is under New Business. You're absolutely right. Thank you. Thank you. All right. Well, that concludes then our, our public hearing. Is there no more comments from the public? And we appreciate, as always, everybody joining us and making their viewpoints known and asking questions. That always adds information for us. So that's, that's, that's very useful for us. That then concludes our public hearing. Do I hear a motion then to end our public hearing?
Mr. Kilby, I move that we end the public hearing session.
Second?
Bryant, second.
All in favor?
Bryant, yes.
Diorio, aye.
Kilby, aye.
Or aye.
Then our public hearing is ended. Thank you all who joined us for that part. We will now move to item number six, our Council Liaison Reports and Comments. We'll begin with Commissioner Kilby.
Commissioner Kilby will be short and sweet. There has not been an LAB meeting this past month, and there has not been an ABC Board meeting this past month.
Those are easy minutes, then.
There you have it. Good news. No, no meetings.
There you go. All righty, then, we will move to Commissioner Diorio.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The UAB did meet this month. The primary topic at hand was a review of, of that master plan with the cell tower, including the technical aspects of the tower and the footprint of the tower. And they have unanimously concurred with the master plan update. And they, they report that the signal that will be generated from that cell tower at the 195 foot level extends all the way down the main channel, three, three to four, even five bars down the main channel, all the way to Sunset Cove to complement the other tower that, that's near Young's Mountain. So the footprint pretty much covers all of Boys Camp Road, all the way up to Blue Heron Point, all the way down the southwestern side, Route 64, all the way down. And so that blind spot that we've had for years will be rectified by that cell tower, and the UAB concurs with, with proceeding with that. The second thing the UAB took a look at was the design build framework that we're working with for our contractor and design agent to move forward with the sewer replacement plan. And particularly, Richard Glasson, the chairman of the UAB, has experience with that and offered some insights to help us develop a good plan for how to, to, you know, bring that to fruition once it comes, comes to play. So they'll look at that again, but we're well on our way to developing a good plan of how to incorporate design build into the way we do business. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Moore?
The zoning and planning board met on Tuesday, October 19th at 9:30 via Zoom. All the things we, that were considered were the cell towers, home occupation permits, and the Boys Camp Road Park Master Plan that Mike just filled us in on. And other than that, if I have nothing to add to what Mike has told us already.
Okay, thank you very much. Then Commissioner Bryant?
Hello, good evening. Lake Structures Appeals Board and Board of Adjustment did not meet in the last month. Parks and Recreation met on the 4th of November, and that was the last Zoom meeting, and we discussed that in ours as well. Parks, Recreation, and Lake Monthly Report went very well. Commissioner Diorio added a discussion about the golf course report under Item H for, for business for a little bit later, so we'll hold off on, on those updates there. Trail Systems are going well. The volunteer services that Dana Bradley has been soliciting have been tremendously helpful for, for our parks and trails development and maintenance. And I wanted to say thank you to her for getting a really well-rounded group of volunteers for that. So the Flying Bridge is moving into their winter season, and the Chamber and the Flying Bridge have events coming up. November 26th is lighting in downtown center in Lake Lour, and December 1st is the Flying Bridge tree lighting. Morse Park is, you know, we're going into winterization, and Parks and Rec is working on replacement of that boardwalk seawall at the gazebo, and permit process is underway just there. And that is, that's kind of the, the full gist of it. We'll get into golf course a little bit later, since we added it to the agenda formally. And that would conclude my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Bryant. Well, that concludes then Section 6, Council Liaison Reports and Comments. We will now move to our public comment section. Anyone from the public is invited to speak. If you'll please keep your comments to five minutes or less. If you wish to speak, you need to unmute your phone and state your name and address. Anyone who's already submitted a written comment to Olivia, the town clerk, Olivia will let us know. Olivia, was there any written comments submitted?
There were not.
All right. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak? Well, thank you. We always appreciate your input if you wish to make it. We'll then move on to item number eight, our consent agenda. Having had an opportunity to review the consent agenda, do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda as posted.
All right, second? I'm sorry, what? Who's that?
Commissioner Kilby, I will second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Bryant, aye.
Diorio, aye.
Kilby, aye.
Or aye.
Then the consent agenda stands approved as written. We'll now move on to unfinished business, which is ordinance Number 21-11-09C, an ordinance adopting and enacting the Town of Lake Lour Code of Ordinances recodification. Shannon, will you address that, or who will address that?
That will be Olivia.
Olivia. Can we tear you away from running our meeting to address that for us, please?
That's fine. So this was on last month's agenda as well, under consent agenda, and it wasn't an ordinance, and it was supposed to be. So it's already been approved. We just had to do it in the ordinance form, and just to be extra safe, we decided to put it under unfinished business instead of consent agenda.
Thank you very much. Do I hear a motion then to approve the ordinance adopting and enacting the Town of Lake Lour Code of Ordinances recodification?
I'll make a motion that we adopt the ordinance 21-11-49C, which is our Code of Ordinances recodification.
All right, is there a second?
Diorio, second.
All right, all in favor?
Bryant, aye.
Diorio, aye.
Kilby, aye.
Or aye.
Then ordinance Number 21-11-09C is unanimously adopted. Thank you very much. And that completes our unfinished business. And we'll move on to new business. The first item on our new business is ordinance Number 21-11-09. And we'll move on to new business. The first item on our new business is ordinance number 21-11-09. I think, is there any more discussion? I know we had, Mike did an excellent job discussing this for us and informing us about each one of these ordinances. But are there any other questions now before we call for a vote?
I need to interject something, Mayor. I was just looking at the written ordinances for those three items, which are fine in their form, but that does not contain a plan consistency statement, which is now required that new and amended ordinances, zoning ordinances, be consistent with with your long-range plan or comprehensive plan. And it doesn't have to be in the, in that document, but we would need someone to make a motion in addition to a motion that the proposed changes are consistent with the comprehensive plan for, and then give a reason. And also that we need a vote and a motion, a motion to vote on that the changes are reasonable and in the public interest. And for instance, with the, with the fee, it would be to lessen the burden of, of public having to pay fees, something along those lines for makes it reasonable and in the public interest. And similarly for the other two. So I don't know, this, I hate to throw this. I just now looked up the written ordinances in the packet on my phone, and I saw that they didn't have that in there. So I don't know if anyone, or if Mike could possibly suggest reasons why it's consistent with the comprehensive plan for each of them, and someone make a motion as we go through the three.
Counselor, may I make a suggestion, Madam Mayor?
Certainly.
An alternative statement basically is neither consistent nor inconsistent with the comp plan, which basically allows it to take a neutral position, and therefore you don't have to state the supporting sections of the comp plan. If you take that approach, if you follow what I'm saying, I'll, I'll defer to you, Counselor.
I'm not quite sure I followed the first part of that, Shannon. Say that again.
A statement can be said that takes a neutral position rather than one that calls on you to pull out supporting elements of the comp plan in support of your ordinance.
Well, the way I understand it is, it has to be, it doesn't, the law just requires you make, you, you adopt a plan consistency statement. It doesn't say that it has to be the best one, or the only one, or a perfect one, but you have to state in changing your zoning ordinances that you have a, that it be consistent with the, with the plan. I mean, you can adopt it even if it's inconsistent with the plan. And then what happens is the plan is considered to be changed at that point.
So, so William, I got, I'll help with that. I'll do the consistency statement after each ordinance.
Okay. And then also a motion, a motion to adopt a statement why it's reasonable and in the public interest. It's a two, two-part thing.
So Commissioner D'Orio, are you prepared then to offer an amendment to these ordinances, or to add that, you know, to add those in order for us to be able to vote?
I think we approve each one, and then I'll add the consistency statement at the end of it, right?
That works at the end of each one.
Yeah.
You have to add it, and then we approve each one. Is that not correct, William?
Yes.
Yeah. At the end of each one, and then we'll take a vote.
The record just needs to reflect that there was plan consistency statement adopted by the board and a statement as to why the change is reasonable and in the public interest. So it might be easier to vote on each, adopting each ordinance, and then the two required statements. And then go to the next one.
All righty.
What's, just so I'm clear, William, what was the second statement again? Let me write it down so I can get it right.
That it's reasonable and in the public interest.
Can those be combined into one motion, or they have to be two separate motions?
The plan consistency is one motion, and the reasonableness in the public interest is, is a separate statement. It's two state, two, two different ones.
So there's really three motions with each ordinance, then?
Yes. That's how we'll have to do it. That's how we have to do it. And in the future, you know, we'll make sure that it's folded in, that language, suggested language for plan consistency is, is actually in the written ordinance.
Madam Mayor, may I make a addendum to the comments I had for the zoning regulations concerning the cell tower setbacks? Addressing the reasonable and in the public best interest?
Certainly.
Well, I, I would move that the proposal as, as given to revise Section 92.042D, Section 4, Section 7, to address the current engineering standards for constructing cell towers that in case of structural failure will fall within a confined area, is reasonable, given the current engineering standards and construction, and is, is in the public interest, the best public interest, in allowing us to be able to meet current standards in approving in approving applications.
Thank you for that.
We've, we've got that.
After we vote on the ordinance, I understand. So why don't we, do I hear a motion then, if, if we go in this order, we will, we will vote on the ordinance itself. We will have a motion to vote on that, and then we will have a motion for each of the two subsequent, the consistency of the comprehensive plan, and is it reasonable in the public interest after that? Thank you for adding that verbiage for us, Mike. Do I hear a motion then, and Commissioner D'Orio, since you have volunteered to take up the flag here for this, do I hear a motion?
Yeah, so I'll, I'll, I'll tell you what, we'll just make this simple because we'll be tripping on each other. So I'll just, I'll just do the motions, and we'll go through it. So first of all, I move that we adopt ordinance number 21-11-TAC-09 as posted in new business.
Do I hear a second?
Bryant will second.
All in favor?
Bryant, I.
Diorio, I.
Kilby, I.
Or I.
Then the ordinance number 21-11-09 is unanimously approved. Do I hear a further motion?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I move that we deem ordinance number 21-11-09 to be consistent with the comprehensive plan because it adopts modern engineering practice into our court of ordinances.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Mr. Kilby, I'll second that.
All in favor?
Bryant, I.
Diorio, I.
Kilby, I.
Or I.
Then that motion is unanimously approved. And now to the motion addressing the reasonableness of the plan, and is it in the public interest?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I move that we deem ordinance number 21-11-09 to be deemed reasonable and in the public interest because it adopts modern safety standards to protect the public.
Right, do I hear a second?
Bryant will second.
All in favor?
Bryant, I.
Diorio, I.
Kilby, I.
And that motion, oh, I'm so sorry, that motion is unanimously approved. Thank you so much. We'll now move to item B, ordinance number 21-11-09A. Do I, do I hear a motion to adopt the ordinances written?
Madam Mayor, I move that town council adopts ordinance 21-TAC-11-TAC-09 Alpha as posted in new business.
Do I hear a second?
Commissioner Kilby, I'll second that.
All in favor?
Bryant, I.
Diorio, I.
Kilby, I.
Or I.
Then the ordinance stands unanimously approved. As to the consistency with the comprehensive plan, do I hear a motion?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I move that we deem ordinance number 21-TAC-11-TAC-09 Alpha to be consistent with the comprehensive plan because it updates procedures that will facilitate home occupation.
Do I hear a second?
Bryant will second that.
All in favor?
Bryant, I.
Diorio, I.
Kilby, I.
Or I.
Then that motion is unanimously approved. Now to the reasonableness of the ordinance, and is the ordinance in the public interest? Do I hear a motion?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I move that town council adopts ordinance number 21-TAC-Z, TAC-11-TAC-09 Alpha, and deem it reasonable and in the public interest because it facilitates the ability for residents to achieve home, or to obtain home occupation permits.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Kilby, I'll second that motion.
All right, all in favor?
Bryant, I.
Diorio, I.
Kilby, I.
Or I.
Thank you very much. Then that motion stands unanimously approved. We will then move on to item number C, ordinance number 21-11-09B. Do I hear a motion to approve this ordinance?
Yes, ma'am, Madam Mayor, I move that town council adopts ordinance number 21-TAC-11-TAC-09B as posted in new business.
Second.
Bryant, second. Yes, 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 yes.
So was that unanimous from everyone then? Then that is unanimously approved.
I don't think, I think we got to do the roll call. We didn't quite do it.
We're remote, so could you, could you vote by your name, please?
I.
Diorio, I.
Kilby, I.
Or I.
Then the motion is unanimously approved. We will then move. No, that's the.
Yeah, we have to go to part two.
Yeah, part two. As to the consistency of this ordinance with our comprehensive plan, do I hear a motion?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I move that town council deem ordinance number 21-TAC-11-TAC-09B to be consistent with the comprehensive plan because it is a direct update to the master plan.
All right, do I hear a second?
I'll second that, Commissioner Kilby.
All righty, all in favor? Please state your.
Bryant, I.
Diorio, I.
Kilby, I.
Or I.
Then the motion is unanimously approved, and we will address the reasonableness of the ordinance and is addressed, is the ordinance in the interest of the public, in the public's interest? Do I hear a motion?
Madam Mayor, I move that town council deem ordinance number 21-TAC-11-TAC-09B to be reasonable and appropriate in the, in the public interest because it improves public safety and provides broadband and internet and cellular connectivity to the residents of Lake Bluer.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Bryant, second.
All right, all in favor? State your name, please, when you vote.
Bryant, I.
Diorio, I.
Kilby, I.
Or I.
And the motion is unanimously approved, and thank you, Commissioner D'Orio, for crafting those responses. And in the future, we will be, thank you, William, for bringing that to our attention. In the future, we will include that in, in any ordinances. We will then move on to item number D under new business, which is FEMA grant funding, Schnabel work number eight, conceptual design for the dam rehabilitation. Shannon, will you be addressing that, or someone else want to take up that?
Laura?
Laura.
Our grant expert.
Indeed, she is.
Good evening. I'm really pleased to announce that we have been approved for a supplemental FEMA grant, which will support the conceptual design of the dam rehabilitation that we've been planning. So we've been awaiting this news, and we're, we're thrilled to have received confirmation from the North Carolina DEQ Dam Safety Office. So if you are approving this, then that would allow Schnabel Engineering to begin the work for the conceptual design.
All right, are there any questions for Ms. Creachey? And we appreciate, as always, all the incredible work that you do on our, on our grant writing and, and following up on that. It's just, it's made so much, it just makes an incredible difference in our ability to get things done. Thank you, Laura.
Thank you. My pleasure.
Do I hear a motion then?
Commissioner Bryant, I'll make a motion that we approve FEMA grant fundings at Schnabel Work Order Number Eight for conceptual design for the dam rehabilitation.
All right, you're a second?
Diorio, second.
All in favor?
Bryant, I.
Diorio, I.
Kilby, I.
Or I.
Then it is approved unanimously. We will then move on to item E, Communications Tower Agreement Update. That would be either Mike or, or Shannon, I'm assuming.
Director Williams, up again.
All right. You're popular tonight, Mr. Williams.
You're muted, Mike.
Mike, are you with us?
Tower update?
Yes.
The, and I'm sorry, I just, I just was tuning out, so I apologize on that.
That's.
The communication tower process is, is advancing well. This was good tonight. Stephen Howard from AT&amp;T is, is on the, on the the call right now and was available to talk if we needed to. We've been discussing the, the appearance of the tower. The, and, and we're ready to move. And I, and I apologize, I'm Shannon, you may have to clue me in here as far as where we are headed on this.
Okay.
So I think we've, we've given the update. We are moving forward, and so the rest of the work will be between staff and the folks that are facilitating tower construction. So we'll, we'll continue to work on that and, and move that forward.
Okay, then, then I will say, if I may, Madam Mayor, working with, with AT&amp;T and with their contractor for the tower, they will be they will be applying for the permit now that we, we've got, we've got done what we needed, so they can apply for that with the setbacks. And they're going to do one more test just to give us a visible, a balloon test to launch a balloon at the side of the tower at the height that it'll go, so that we can see it. And I think it's going to be helpful in, in going through the approval process. And we are ready to move. They're excited, and we are. I would like to add on there on the, on the receptivity report that Commissioner D'Orio spoke to in the plain language that I can understand, the, the report actually indicates that we will have four and five bars of service all through the main channel of the lake up into, up into big water, up to the dam, and, and the commissioner's home up there, on up the other direction back towards Chimney Rock. And it won't be four and five bars, but on up into that cave going up that way. So it's a very good, it's a very, very good report that we got on the reception we could expect. And the report was based on indoor reception inside of a house. So it would actually be even stronger for somebody who was, was using a cellphone outside. So process is moving very well.
Well, the thought of that is just delightful, I can tell you. I'd be happy with one bar in Firefly Cove, so that sounds like an early Christmas, to be honest with you. Are there any questions about the Communication Tower Agreement?
Madam Mayor, if I, if I could add a couple of things that for some people that just came on may not be aware of as we work through the Communication Tower. So it's going to be a streamlined design. It's going to be a monopole, which means all that, all the cables will be inside, so it won't look like a bunch of cables on the side of a pole, especially in that fairly visible area of, of Boys Camp, but certainly out of the viewscape of, you know, Bald Mountain and, and the, the general view that we see from the. of, you know, Bald Mountain and, and the, the general view that we see from the beach into the mountains will not be obstructed in, and also from Chimney Rock. If you're looked down from Chimney Rock, that tower would be out of the viewscape, covered, you know, a little bit by the trees on one side, but it certainly does not obstruct the lake view even from Chimney Rock as we took a look at that three-D. And we'll have more updates later on. So, so the placement at a hundred ninety-foot, ninety-five-foot tower that won't require an FAA required aviation light at the top of it. So it will not be uplift, uplift or lighted on top, a hundred ninety-five feet gives us the signal that we need in Lake Lor and minimizes the, the, the impact on the viewscape that we see from those two, those two directions. So it was a perfect placement down in there. We don't get that kind of signal if we were to put it even up on the mountains based on the shadowing up there. So working with AT&amp;T and Mr. Howard, we appreciate, you know, all that you've done and the work that you've done. That placement is, is about perfect for what we need it to be and, and out of the way. So that's worth mentioning as we go forward.
Thank you so much for that explanation. That, that really gives a lot of information. Mike, thank you so much for the update. We appreciate we're moving forward with this. And I know everybody's excited about it. And I believe we said that we are hopeful that this would might be completed by the summer of 2022. Is that correct?
We're, that's the direction we're looking.
That's perfect. Well, that, that's, that's a good direction. Thank you so much for all your work. This is something that's been worked on for a long, long time. Lots of sites have been looked, looked at for the last couple of years that were unacceptable. So we're delighted that we finally found one. This is really important to the people who live here now and also to attract more people who would like to work from their homes here. We'll then move on to item F.
Before we go on, I have been told that Commissioner Moore has lost service, which is very on topic for this, but he is no longer with us. We still have a quorum and he can join back anytime. I just wanted to let you know.
All right, you can always join by phone too if he has. If he has no service.
It looks like we didn't get the cell tower in in time.
Yes. Those of us living in Firefly Cove agree. I'm just, I'm quaking here since his house is, you know, two down from mine. So we'll see. Item F now certified public safety personnel compensation and budget amendment number three-one-seven. And I believe Commissioner D'Orio, you're going to address that.
I would be happy, this was a joint effort, Madam Mayor, but I would be happy to give a perspective as to why this item is on there. So we did a review of, of all the wages and salaries that, that we are paying in the town of, of Lake Lor. Particular in public safety compared to the surrounding areas. You know, the market has, has really risen in public safety and wages around us, Arden, Fletcher, Hendersonville, they've all been going up to try to compete with, with other entities that these, the firemen and police would be going to. So wages in the area are going up. And, and in fairness, we took a look at that to say, hey, we, we really appreciate our public safety personnel and we want to compensate them appropriately. So we took a look at, at the numbers and it was very clear to us as we studied the matter further and we get into it further. But it was very clear to us that we were underpaying our firemen and, and police compared to the surrounding area. And this is probably appropriate time to put in a plug of, of what they do for us. I, I mean, we appreciate everything that they do, but I'll tell you, when, when you, as a mayor, deemed a state of emergency during the storm a couple of weeks ago, those folks did not ask, you know, how much overtime I'm going to get. They, they came to work and they stayed at work for those five days that we just had a torrential rainfall. The nine-one-one calls went through the roof, roads were blocked, the firemen were clearing the roads, giving access to Duke Energy. We were, you know, trying to keep the lakes clear. We had, we had docks that had broken loose. We certainly had medical emergencies among all that. So I'll tell you, tho- those folks came to the rescue and we appreciate that. The firemen, working, by the way, with the volunteer fire department is a great team and they, and they performed really well. And so that, that just leads me again to, to say, we, we appreciate what you do. And I have a proposal in order to get their pay and compensation where it should be compared to the surrounding community. And so what I am proposing is a, a pay increase for all our certified public, public safety personnel of a five percent increase in their pay. And, and for firemen in particular, because they were even, even lower, an eight percent increase for them. Another thing worth, worth noting for the, for the firemen is that they are also seeking medical certifications that'll help us bridge the gap and mitigate the gap that was presented to us when the ambulances, two, or actually one ambulance, I think, went away at Hickory Nut Gorge as the county tries to get us better ambulance service. So the firemen are going to help mitigate and be the first responders for that as well. So this will help encourage and compensate them for that effort as they get further certified. So I propose that we approve the wage and salary increase as proposed in item, new business, item F.
All right, and that is budget amendment number three-one-seven. Do I hear a second?
Moore will second.
Oh, you're back. Oh, good. All right, John Moore, seconds, all in favor?
Brian, aye.
Yorio, aye.
Kilby, aye.
Moore, aye.
Then the budget amendment number three-one-seven is approved unanimously. And we do all appreciate the incredible amount of work and, and the courage of our fire favors in, in keeping us safe. We'll move on then to item number G, which is Manhole Rehabilitation Project Bid Award. I don't think this is Mike, so someone else will get this.
Sure. So Madam Mayor, we have a representative from Labella Associates with us, Reese Walsh. And so he will go through the bid process that we recently facilitated for the Manhole Rehab project. So Mr. Walsh?
Thank you, Finn, and it's good to be with you guys. I'm excited that we are beginning the first step in what the, the scope of work that was originally conceived of in the YARD ID, which is the rehabilitation of the existing manholes. On Monday, we opened bids that were solicited informally. And the responsible low bidder was CTR Utility Rehabilitation LLC for an amount of four hundred seventy-four thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars. I believe we had six hundred and ten thousand was our budget number that went into the report with the state. So I believe we have a good number and we have called the references provided. We're familiar with this contractor and would like to recommend that we award the contract and proceed with getting the contractor on the lake to begin the work next month.
All right, Reese, thank you so much. Are there any questions from the council for, for Reese? All righty, then do I hear a motion that we accept the Manhole Rehabilitation Project Bid Award?
Madam Mayor, I'll make the motion that we accept the Manhole Rehabilitation Project Bid Award. Presenting Mr. Walsh.
All right, second?
Brian, go ahead, Yorio.
Yorio, second.
All right, all in favor?
Brian, aye.
Yorio, aye.
Kilby, aye.
Moore, aye.
All right then, unanimously, we have approved the Manhole Rehabilitation Project Bid Board. Thank you so much. We will now move to item H, which was an addition, which is the golf course transition. And I believe Commissioner D'Orio, you had added that? You'd like to speak to that?
Yeah, thank, thank you, Madam Mayor. So this, this item is to kind of get, as a matter of public record, what, what the state of play is, no pun intended, with the golf course. And so we've, a- as everyone knows, the golf course subsidy will, will end, which subsequently terminated the contract at the golf course. Golf course operations will cease at the end of December. And then there'll be a vacating period of about a month in January and we move on. But in, in the town of Lake Lor, there's all kinds of speculation and ideas of what's going on with the golf course. So my proposal that I'm going to put forward kind of puts the record straight and puts a marker down for where we are and what we plan to do. And there's three major points. The first point is that the, the golf course, by the way, is in the general use zone. It always has been, as well as Dipmer Watts right next to it, which, which means it's publicly owned. It's owned by the town of Lake Lor and it's open for public access. And that's consistent where we want to go. So th- this isn't a zoning issue. This is a designation issue. And I, and I, the first point I'd like to make is I'd like to designate the golf course grounds as green space. What that means is that we're not actively pursuing, at this point right now, any development within that green space. It's just designated from a golf course to a green space. Item number two is to notify everyone that it will be open to the public for, for their enjoyment to walk, walk their dog, consistent with Dipmer Watts right, right next to it. It'll be open to the public as of the first of January of 2022. The third point is, and this is guidance for our Parks and Recs folks, the standard of maintenance for the golf course area, so there's no confusion. I propose that the standard of maintenance for the golf course be consistent with trail maintenance with our other municipal parks, specifically Dipmer or Watts that's next door. What that means is that the Parks and Recs folks will maintain the trailways within the golf course area free and clear to be able to walk and enjoy as you will. And there's some discretion as to which areas will be allowed to be outgrown so that, so that it covers some of those other areas of the golf course. So that maintenance standard is important as an operational point, and that's the third point. So I, I, I propose as a matter of public record that we adopt those three points.
All right, are there any questions? Discussion?
Yeah, and Commissioner Dur, thank you very much. And we had a chance to, to talk about some of those as well. And, you know, with, with golf courses and green spaces, ma- maintenance is, is key. And with the lake coming down, water can be, you know, a little more difficult to come by. But our concessioners prove that it can be maintained throughout the winter time also. And, you know, Parks and Rec does have a couple liaisons on their board that if a concessionaire does come forward that presents a plan that does not include a subsidy from the town, it's something that Parks and Rec can make a recommendation to town council and to, and on, on the management to see about bringing a new concessionaire in that does not include a subsidy. And there, we don't, we don't have a, a solid plan from anybody yet, but there are some interested parties within that. And the liaisons on Parks and Recreation Board as advisors are seeing if there are options that exist to, you know, keep it as a golf course, but remove that tax subsidy so that we can clean our house and clean our books so that as we look for these money for our bigger projects and this two-hundred-year plan essentially, that we are, we're in a good position when we go ask them for money. So and then Mrs. Bradley told us they are soliciting another for Parks and Rec and operations to work as part of maintenance for, you know, ensuring Parks and Recs and trails, but then also the green space too. And that's, that's where I stand on it.
All right, thank you for that input. And, you know, certainly it's good transition here, as we said, golf course transition as we wait to see what is the best and, and best use of the, of the property for the town of Lake Lor. And so this gives the townspeople an opportunity to use that green space while we do that. So I think excellent plan. So you made the proposal, Commissioner D'Orio, do I hear a second for us to approve that proposal?
Commissioner, Commissioner Brian, I'll second that proposal.
All right, all in favor?
Brian, aye.
Yorio, aye.
Kilby, aye.
Moore, aye.
And this, the proposal is unanimously approved. That concludes our new business. We will now move into closed section. Do I hear a motion to move into closed session?
I'll make a motion that we move into closed session in accordance with GS one-four-three dash three-one-eight dot one-one-A-three for attorney-client privilege or legal claims.
And we need to also add to that.
And and personnel issues items to be discussed.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Yorio, second.
All in favor?
Brian, aye. Brian, aye.
I'm sorry, Yorio, aye.
Kilby, aye.
All righty, then.
Almost got through the day.
We, we are, we will move into closed session. I know that you need a few minutes, Olivia. Will you be moving us into a break room as before?
Yes, I can do that. Give me just a second to kick everyone off.
Certainly.
All right, let me stop recording.